I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of May 23, 2019 to order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmsky for rook.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Parker is absent tonight. Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
And Trustee Nero is absent tonight. Attorney Carrera.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
And Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. It's kind of a, always an exciting night when we have a new police officer to swear in. But right now, open forum. Is there anybody here who has any item to discuss that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the agenda and move on to reports. And my first one, I'm going to ask Chief Gunther to come up and we're going to swear in our new officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight, we do swear in Officer Kyle Kurt to the Westmont Police Department. He's our 39th of 40 officers, so very happy to have him. He's a graduate of the Celia Law Enforcement Academy and a homegrown Westmont kid. So he graduated from Westmont High School in 2008 and went to college locally at Benedictine, graduating in 2013. So he's currently in field training. He's going to come on up. And Mayor, if you could step forward and swear in Officer Kurt.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Kyle Kurt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of police officer.
The duties for the office of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I'd like to thank you so well. Congratulations.
Now, as customary, Officer Kurt will have the, his badge pinned and he has selected his mom to step forward and pin his badge. Now Officer Kurt is going to say a couple of words and then we'll get into a couple of pictures and be on our way to cake and coffee.
All right, I'll keep this short, as promised. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Gunther for taking the time to swear me in today and of course Chief Gunther for showing up today. I would like to thank, these are better places to be. The Village Board, of course, the Fire Police Board and all of the FTOs, sergeants and field training officers who have been very welcoming and helpful trying to get me up to speed on everything I need to be an effective patrol officer. Everyone's been very welcoming. I'd like to say thank you to Sergeant Gomorzak who helped get me through and into academy. He helped make sure I always had everything I needed, everything was taken care of and squared away before I even went to academy, which was very much appreciated, made a very stressful situation as easy as it could have been. Of course, I'd like to thank my mother and stepfather for being very supportive, my grandmother, who is clearly beside herself. All my brothers and sisters for being supportive, especially my sister Amber, who helped make sure everything was taken care of while I was away. Long days at the academy and all the pets we have, it really helped having someone at home to take care of things when I couldn't be there. I'm just very happy to be given this opportunity to serve the community I grew up in. This is the dream location for me. I wouldn't want to work anywhere else and start a career there, especially in the town that my grandfather served for. So, thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
You want your family up for the picture?
Chief, how many years did any serve?
Old chief, where you at?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So this is, we believe it's the first time we've had a grandfather, grandson, commendation at the Westmont Police Department. So definitely carrying on a tradition.
That's awesome.
Isn't that great? I wish they were.
Fifteen years ago, it was like that.
I don't want to photobomb, I'm trying to.
As is customary, we do have cake and coffee, which we're going to adjourn to in a second. I would like to thank the Fire and Police Ca- Fire and Police Commission for their hard work in hiring Officer Kurt. They have been doing a great job in the last two years, processing applications and getting us very good quality police officers for our community. And it's, it's a ton of work and we do appreciate that. We have two of the three commissioners here tonight and they're also currently working hard on the, on the next 40th person, get the last lot filled. And we just received the background investigation from them yesterday, which we're processing. So, very, very good work and that's what I got. Thank you.
Chief, thank you. You guys, you can go have coffee and cake.
Enjoy.
Keep running our meeting.
Vince would have been on the phone.
Not you, Tom. At this point, I'll continue with my report and Village of Westmont Internship Program. I'll invite Jenny Babiar up to get some information.
I'd just like to say that Larry McIntyre and I in the Communications Department have accepted our second intern this summer. He is a student from District 99. He is a Westmont resident. He's in an extended program because he is physically disabled, but mentally, he's excelled. He's already taking college program classes. He has an interest in journalism, political science, actually, a little bit of law enforcement. We do plan on introducing him to probably Steve Nero, maybe Deion Mizoghi, the mayor of course, and Fire Department, Police Department, just get him a well-rounded experience and get him some experience writing press releases, so it'll be a great experience for him.
And I can add to that, that his supervisor, his teacher, was elated that we had an opportunity to create an internship for him.
Thanks.
And he is a Westmont?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, do we know his name?
Oh, yes. His name is Kelvin Harion. He's actually written a few articles for his local news, uh, school newspaper, which is Downers Grove South Newspaper. So if you want to look that up.
Thank you. I have another item. I'm going to call Greg Pill up to the podium to talk about an exciting Race to the Flag.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, trustees. This Sunday at 8:00 AM, we will kick off the 10th Annual Race to the Flag, which is a 5K walk-in race. And it's a collaborative effort between the Westmont Park District, the Village of Westmont, the Lions Club, and the People's Resource Center. So, everybody pitching and working together. Today, we had a fun time. We had a little field trip down into the city and we had a chance to be interviewed with Terrell on ABC 7. And we'll take a quick look at that video clip right now. This is an exciting second of this commercial. But we will, we will be opening up, or registration is still open for this race and it's.
10th Annual Race to the Flag is coming up Sunday in suburban Westmont. The Park District has partnered with the local nonprofit, People's Resource Center. So all the proceeds from the race go right back to the community. Greg Pill is the race director. He's here along with Ken Madden, the Food Pantry Director at the People's Resource Center, and Morgan Abate, the Grant Writer at the People's Resource Center. It's good to see all of you guys. Thank you so much for dropping by. We appreciate it. So Greg, tell me, tell me about the race.
All right, well, this is our 10th annual race, so we've been doing it for 10 years. And it's, it's twofold. One, it's a fun family event, but it also has a serious side to it. We'll talk about that in a second. But the fun part, you know, we've got several hundred people come out for this race. We end it with a pancake breakfast. You don't see many of those.
This is great.
It's on the food guys, so we gotta, we gotta get over the carbs.
Yeah, love to eat.
It's a flat course, CARA certified, United States Track certified. There's three medals. You can see the beautiful medals right here. These will be for each age group, five-year splits, three, first, second, and third. We give encased flags to the first couple of finishers. And it's a joint effort between the Park District, the Village of Westmont, the Lions Club, the Rotary, People's Resource Center. Everybody's in together. And it's really a family thing. We have three generations and we have one four-generation family with 19 people that does it every year. So you could walk it, you could run it, you could push a stroller. We watch out there supporting it.
Come on out there, right?
It's a fun thing. But you know, it's a serious thing too. Our goal is to raise money. Every penny that we raise goes to the People's Resource Center.
Which we're going to talk about here with, you know, we got Ken with the Food Pantry, right?
Yep, which is the People's Resource Center.
The People's Resource Center too. It's all together. So how does this help the resource, or the Food Pantry?
My, People's Resource Center has been serving DuPage County for 45 years. We provide food and clothing, shelter, and educational opportunities to people in DuPage County. And the money raised from the event will go all towards food and helping the community of DuPage County.
And then Morgan, how does this have an impact?
So, every year, we serve about 30,000 people throughout DuPage County. And we know that there's a need because about 65,000 people can't make ends meet, they don't know where their next meal is coming from. And so you are providing that hope. We're so happy to have the Westmont community coming out in full force every year to support all of our programs and their neighbors that are in need.
So there you go. So with the last 10, 15 seconds we got left, ultimately, what is the goal here? What are you guys trying to do?
Well, the goal is to raise as much money as we can to help put food on the table to those who are less fortunate than us and provide clothing and job training. And we do it in the family fun atmosphere. This is a three-day weekend and this is just one part of it. And there'll be thousands of people out there for a barbecue competition. Our race is Saturday, Sunday morning and you can, you can register at racetotheflag.org.
So go on out there, race, have a good time, get you some food.
And eat some pancakes!
Exactly. No, I'm all about that.
Very good, Greg.
Super. You know, ABC has been a partner for the last several years in this and I just wanted to say thank you to them. It's been nice to, to have the publicity and help us out. It's a great thing. It's something, you don't have to, to work hard at this, you can walk it. You spend an hour, it's 3.1 miles, which is 5K. And I'd just like to let everybody know that registration is still open, so you can register online right now at racetotheflag.org. Or if you wanted to do paper and pencil, you could stop over at the Westmont Park District Community Center at 75 East Richmond and you can register tomorrow between 9:00 and 4:00. And finally, you can go ahead and show up the morning of the race on Sunday and register at Ty Warner Park between 6:15 and 7:30. We close registration at 7:30, the race gets off sharp at 8:00. And the great finish is pancakes in the park with your family. So, hope to see you all out there. Thanks so much.
A guest starter?
We do not this year. We, so we've gone ahead and we've elevated and we will have the mayor of Westmont starting.
I didn't ask for that, but Judy would always come and.
You know, she's been here for the last several years and she has an ongoing illness in her family right now. And she's been commuting to Arizona on weekends to take care of a sick member of the family. And so we wish her well with that and we hope that she'll be back next year.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you out there on Sunday. Thanks.
The last item, Monday, Memorial Day, 10:30. The parade starts and goes south on Cass at Naperville 47th Street and ends at Veterans' Memorial Park down Richmond. And it, there'll be a ceremony at the Memorial Rock. I call it Memorial Rock, but at Veterans Memorial Park. Those who, please come out, the individuals who served this country and gave the ultimate sacrifice, I think the least we can do is come and support them. So, that's all I have. I'll go to Clerk Simmsky.
Well, I want to announce that the luge is back. Obviously, we have signs around us that say the luge is back. June 22nd and 23rd, the U.S. Olympic luge team will return to Westmont for the sixth time to conduct their Midwest search for future luge Olympians. The other thing, I'm, I know Jim will speak about it a great deal, but with the red, white, and barbecue this weekend, they have partnered with Rotary and Rotary runs the carnival. I think it's supposed to be fairly decent. I hope it doesn't rain a lot. Last year was almost too hot for kids to be on rides because it was so hot. So the cooler temperatures will help us, it'll help people to come out too for the red, white, and barbecue. And drink lots of beer.
Not the kids.
Not the kids. Just the adults. So, just please come out. It's a fun time, there's good music, it's very safe out there. We have our wonderful Police Department run, walking around, taking care of that, the Fire Department riding around, making sure everything's all right, except you, you cannot ride the bike. So, just come out. Come out to the red, white, and barbecue. It's a good time. Thank you.
Trustee Addington.
She took all my attention. Well, as we said, red, white, and barbecue starts tomorrow, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three days. Right now, we have 90 teams cooking on two different contests on what we call the pro side. They cook chicken, ribs, pork, and brisket and competing for about $20,000 in prize money. On Saturday afternoon, we also have a backyard competition with, I think, 36 competitors this year. And they cook chicken and ribs and these are more of your amateur or wannabes if you, if you want to say it. And they're competing for about $1,200 in prize money. And then on Friday night, we have our second year of doing the steak competition and each competitor cooks up a one, a one and one-eighth inch ribeye steak and that is judged and they also compete for about $2,000 in prizes. So, altogether, we've got about 160 different teams competing. It's the largest competition in the Midwest. And, and it's an exciting time. As mentioned, there is a carnival. It's, it's, anyone was going to say Astro, it's not Astro, it's.
It's what?
Donny's Carnival.
What's the name of it? I never remember the name of it.
I didn't remember.
We'd call it Donny's.
Alpine.
Alpine, thank you.
Thank you.
Alpine amusement and there's a lot of rides. If the weather is good, I think the splash pad will be open. There is, I think, 11 food vendors, three barbecue vendors is for sure, and I think pizza and then some other types. So there should be food for.
Rilled cheese, cold stone creamery, bund cakes, lemon shakeups by the chamber, so much food.
Yeah, a lot of food. And then, of course, the beer tent. And the scouts will be there and they're doing the pop in the water. So it should be a very fun time. We're a little tighter this year because of the construction that's going on across the street where they're doing the auditorium, but we're still going to be all right. We're down, we had to downsize just slightly this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll get back to normal, which would be more like a total of 200 teams. But again, fun, fun time, come out, it's free, parking is free. And you can sit and listen to the bands and you can go to WWW Westmont BBQ and see the list of entertainment. And like I said, it runs until Friday, until Sunday. And hope everybody will come and have a good time.
What are your hours?
We open at 4:00 on Friday until 10:11. And then Saturday, we open at noon, again, until about 10:11. Sunday, we'll open again at noon until 8:00.
Thank you.
9:00. 9:00, excuse me.
And the ride tickets will be available on, are the bracelets that they can ride for four hours with.
Yeah, ride till you throw up.
At 12:00 on both Sunday, or Saturday and Sunday, 12 to 4:00.
So, again, you just heard, saw the ad for the Race to the Flag. I know that we've been interviewed on WGN. I think Larry Babiar was interviewed on that, or both of you.
Me.
You were interviewed, excuse me. And so Jenny was interviewed on that and then several of our, our committee members have been interviewed on different radio stations. And I think that one of the stations is going to be out there live.
Yeah, Dane Neal with On the Road, WGN, he's going to be out this weekend, shadow.
Don't be shy.
Dane Neal with On the Road, WGN, a radio station who's also voted our cruising nights the best in the burbs, is really loving Westmont. So he's coming out to shadow Larry Babiar and myself to see all about the KCBS barbecue side of the event and learn more and do some on-air interviews and compile a bunch of stuff and put a lot more on the radio Memorial Day. So, keep an eye out for that on the radio and also on their website. He'll put that on there.
And then, so, any questions? All right then. Our next community development meeting will be on July 18th at 4:30 here at the Village Hall. And I save the one little negative, for some reason, I'm starting to get complaints from people in Northwest Acres, which is near Miller School. They're, they're telling me that the sidewalks there are really topsy-turvy, that a lot of them are at angles or separating. And I don't, I know we talked about that, I just don't remember if that area was, was some that you had worked on in this year's budget or not.
Yeah, I can't answer it specifically. They'll certainly, you know, be inspected. When it came up last time was the, the Park Street and.
Yeah, which would be the same area, yeah.
But the whole neighborhood and periodically, they're inspected directly, but we do rely on, you know, the reports to go out and check them.
Okay, good. And that's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to the barbecue, you find that that's truly a community event. You've got the Rotary, the Lions, the Park, the Chamber. Everybody comes together to raise funds and provide a good entertainment for our community.
Absolutely. That's what we want, we want everybody involved.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting right before this meeting, this evening, and I would like to congratulate the Fire Department for being first runner-ups for the Dr. Hartman Award. It's for our paramedics, so I want to congratulate them. And then our Police Department and our Fire Department did a wonderful job on the annual reports. These will both be up on the website, so keep an eye out for those. Pretty much everything we talked about at our Public Safety Committee meeting is in these reports, so I want to say thank you again and look forward to seeing those on the website. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be August 15th, 4:30 here at Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. Now, I'd like to invite up Chief Gunther to talk about the Police Department and all of the great things going on.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. We had a really good last week for, for raising money for Illinois Special Olympics. We had the Cop on a Rooftop event last Friday, which was chilly, very cold on the roof. And I was, I was required to be on the roof earlier than normal, so I had to spend from 5:30 in the morning till, till close to noon. But it was worth it. We raised $5,200 for the two locations, the Ogden Avenue location and 63rd Street Dunk and Donuts. It's nearly double what we've ever collected on, on a single Cop on a Rooftop event. Very much hard work by Sergeant Gomorzak and Sergeant Weibler to organize all of us on the police end. Absolutely great outpouring of support from the community, great outpouring of support from village staff. Lot of faces from staff went to both locations because we always keep track of who shows up. We have a list. And then the next day on Saturday, we had a shred event at the Police Department and we raised another $1,300 during that. So for Illinois Special Olympics, we are well over $12,000 on the year for, for contributions and look forward to more successful events in the future.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
Did anyone, if you got to see how super cool it was that the Westmont Police Department is on the back of those T-shirts this year?
Yes.
So that was super cool. And I think those might still be available, correct?
Uh, they're, they are available. We have lots to sell. So you want to show up at the Police Department, I can find you two sergeants that'll, that'll give you shirts in your size.
And I actually have a question. My husband wants to know when the raffle tickets are going to be on sale for the Harley.
Ooh, that's a good question. I will, I think they're on sale right now.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, if, if your husband wants one, I will get him, get one to you.
Yeah, and as, I don't know if everyone knows, but two years ago, my husband actually was one of the six, so we went to Orland Park. They picked a key, they put it in the bike. He did not win, but it was a great opportunity. They had Special Olympians there and I would encourage everyone, go and get the raffle tickets, get the T-shirts. It's a great fundraiser and I want to thank the Police Department for all their hard work on that.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks. Now I'd like to call up Chief Riley to talk about the Fire Department, the exciting things going on.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. So I'd like to thank Jenny Babiar and Larry McIntyre in the Communications Division. As you know, EMA volunteers are a vital part of this town. As I gave the presentation earlier, they donate about 1,600 hours a year. That saves about $50,000 to the village. So with the blast through social media and Jenny and Larry doing what they do, we've gotten seven new EMA volunteers that Chief, retired Chief, new EMA Director Dave Weiss is putting them through background checks and you'll be seeing them out in the streets in August and September for our events. So if anybody is still interested in being an EMA volunteer, you can fill out an application at www.westmont-il.gov and we'll get you in contact with EMA Director Weiss. The second thing is, we still have openings for our 3rd and 4th grade students for our Kid Safety Camp, which is in conjunction with the Police Department on June 19th and 20th. Basically, you drop your son or daughter off to the firehouse from 9:00 to 3:00. They go through many programs, have fun, usually great weather, they get to play with the fire hose out back, they get to visit with a K-9 dog that comes in. So again, we're looking to fill a few more spots, June 19th and 20th. Thank you.
And Mayor, that's all we have this evening.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been so busy since the last meeting, I don't even know where to begin. We, I've been fully devoted to Westmont. I should quit my job at this point, I think.
Father won't let you.
Yeah, right. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mike Ramsey and Noriel. Cass Avenue is completed before our special events start. I know it was a headache yesterday, but it looks great. I know the mayor, you noticed it today, what a big difference. So, thank you to the public works. We know that that was a headache there. Moving on, we, the Westmont Rotary Club was able to give away scholarships this week and I was able to attend the senior awards. And Trustee Addington was there amongst others and wow, what an amazing senior class. And the accomplishments of these children in our town, it's just amazing. And, you know, sometimes we hear the millennials, we hear this, but not at Westmont High School. They really have an impressive class there. You know, the valedictorians, we, we saw aeronautical engineering, pharmacists, all of these programs, which goes back to John and Amy, what they're doing at the junior high. And then there was scholarships that were tied back to Miller and Manning students, which again, ties it all into how 201 is working together. And was really just, right Jim, was just a really an impressive, you just left there with such a positive attitude about the future and what's going on at Westmont High School. So, great things going on there. Also was able to attend the.
I'm in because I think that's important. The, Jack Baldeman, the principal, said that normally you get about 10% maybe that can get to the, that Illinois State Scholar Honor Roll, which in our case would be about eight or nine. We had 18 kids that made that list. So, twice as many, and that's very impressive.
And Jack also mentioned that they had the least amount of disciplinary actions. And Jack also mentioned that they had the least amount of disciplinary actions in Westmont school history. So overall, he brought that back to they are creating good citizens. You know, the academics is one thing, but, but being good citizens. So as we've been seeing over the last how many ever years, but, but really Westmont High School and the whole District 201 is, is a sought-after school district. So, so great things going on there. Moving along, the Cop on Top was, was great. I was on the Ogden, so whoever verifies that. And then the recycling event, that was a great way to get rid of a lot of papers and then help out the Special Olympics in the same, at the same time. We also had an Economic Development Committee meeting. We were proposed with a Mariano's gas station that will be at the west end of the parking lot. This is, was kind of meant for that and that got a positive recommendation from the economic development. We also talked about rezoning of Quincy Avenue. This was changed years ago and the developments just haven't come over the last 20 years, so we're looking to change the zoning back to a more favorable, more useful area. And we also will have an Economic Development Committee meeting the first Wednesday of June at 9:00 AM, which is always good news. We have obviously some, some people bringing in future economic development. Lastly, we, or one other thing, we had a Twin Lakes After Hours and that was well attended. Nobody won the $4,000 put-off, so that will be again next year. And then lastly, we had the Taiwanese Family Fun Fest and we have some visuals here. And this was the cover of the, the Suburban Life and then it had a nice article on the inside. If anyone was able to catch it, it's available now. And again, just more press and, and a great event with our Sister City program. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to add that all the profit from that fence went to the Chamber for scholarships. And just to clarify, I mean, the Lions and Rotary, those scholarships are open to the entire community. Anybody who resides in Westmont, so you can go to a number of high schools. It's just that this year it seemed that Westmont had most of the finalists.
And the Rotary Club did have one from Hinsdale Central, but I was more apt to go to the Westmont High School. I felt comfortable there, so that's what I chose to do. And I believe Julia from the library presented at the, at the Hinsdale Central.
Thank you. Trustee Little, oh, you're by yourself.
All people on that side of the room.
Since I'm flying solo on the side of the floor, I'm going to do a little bit of talking tonight. Unusual for me, I know. Public Works Committee meeting, the next one will be June 20th at 4:30 in this room. Please feel free to come out and join us for that one. Westmont First, they had a meeting just Monday evening and there should be a picture. There we go. Wrong one.
Can I talk about Cruisin' Nights first?
Okay, let's go to Cruisin' Nights. Since it's, June 6th starts our Cruisin' Nights. And this is an event that happens every Thursday night from June, July, and August. And as we all know and love, this is a wonderful event. It brings in more people, more fun. We have activities, we have the live music in two different locations. We have one down by Neat and one close to the Knights of Columbus. We have kids activities, crafters' bounce house provided by the fire department and the police department. We have the exotic reptiles, we have vendors and a whole lot more. So please feel free to come out and join us every single Thursday night because it's a fun time and I race out of my meetings down there just so I can be a part of it all because it's so much fun. Moving on, Westmont First. I'd like to invite Jenny Babiar up to talk about the review of the Community Arts Initiative.
Since Larry's not here, I'll do my best. I know he explained it a little bit last week, but I'll recap as well. I know on Monday, we brought this initiative to the Westmont First Committee and they loved it, they loved the idea, they're totally on board. We definitely all want to move ahead with it. And basically, it's bringing more art to Westmont, which could involve murals in the Westmont train station on the inside, maybe mosaics on the outside. There's great canvas on the outside, on the brick. There's almost natural brick squares that they would go right inside, which would be on the Quincy side, maybe on the train track side that the commuters would see. And then the people being dropped off on the Quincy side, they would see them on that side. I know we're working with also on the inside of the train station, the Chamber with some other beautification projects. And also WSCC, working with them for some summer art shows at Cruisin' Nights and art shows just throughout the year and art showcases toward the end of the year. So there's a lot in the works.
Great, thank you.
So more to come.
We have our next meeting to be determined in June. It'll be 6 o'clock at the Westmont Public Library, so come out for that one. The Environmental Improvement Commission. We did the River Sweep, which was at the southwest corner of 59th and Williams Street. And that happened last Saturday. Kind of muddy. As you could see, everybody got in and had a great time. And can you talk, Jenny, about anything that we were able to accomplish there?
I wasn't there, just some pictures of what they did and what they accomplished.
There was a lot of trash in the area, I do know that. I drove by there several times and was astounded by how much we needed to be in there working and they did a fabulous job of cleaning up, so thank you. We do have the storm drain stenciling program coming up, June 1st. We do need more volunteers, so please, please, please go onto our website and sign up to do storm drain stenciling. And basically what they do is they take a big stencil and lay it down by the storm drains and spray paint it so that it's really obvious that we don't want certain things to go into the system, so come out for that one. Also, there is a community survey that we're going to be doing through the Environmental Improvement Commission. The community, community survey to gauge interest in upcoming topics while it's composting opportunities. And so if everybody would go to our website, wesmontillinois.gov and take that survey now, we'd really, really appreciate it. We'll be able to get back on track and go where we need to be for environmental improvement in Westmont. And Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, does any board member see any items they want removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask manager may to please read.
Thank you. On the consent agenda this evening, it starts with Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the following Village Board Minutes. First is the special meeting or the budget workshop meeting that was held on May 2nd, 2019. And secondly, the Village Board meeting held May 9th, 2019. This is followed by March 29 Financial Report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of March 2019. We have finance ordinance number two in the amount of $1,385,091.10. And we have several, several purchase orders. The purchase orders on the consent agenda, many, I'm just going to explain one thing now for all of them. If it's annual or an open purchase order, these are purchase orders that were encumbering the entire amount. It's not a payout being made today. It's just approving that purchase order so they can make the incremental payments promptly throughout the year. First purchase order is CDS Office Systems, $27,832. This is a direct purchase order for public safety in-car cellular modems. Next purchase order, Benestar Hartford, $180,000. That is a, the fiscal year 2020 retiree Medicare premiums. At the same time, you'll see the first installment, you know, in the finance ordinance as well, but this is a annual purchase order. Governmental Insurance Network, $2,250,000. That is the annual health insurance cost. That is an open purchase order. Amalgamated Bank of Chicago, $1,227,462.50. Represents the annual debt service. This is for bonds issued, well, 2013A, 2013B, and 2017 bonds. Next is DuPage Senior Citizens Council, $24,000. This is a annual support for Meals on Wheels. Next purchase order is Dumeg, $20,800. This is an annual contribution. Next, Clark Environmental Mosquito, $79,520. That's the annual cost for mosquito abatement services. There's a note here to point out that you've already approved a purchase order for Clark Environmental for this exact same dollar amount. That was done in April in the other fiscal year and for reasons that are part the new system and part just what month we did it, this purchase order replaces that one. It's the same amount and the other one would be unused or void after this. Next purchase order, Bell Fuels, $245,000 for the annual fuel at the Village Fuel Center. That first installment is also included in the finance ordinance. Thomas Engineering, $24,260.64. This is for engineering services related to the Burlington CAS realignment project. And those purchase orders add up to $4,078,875.14. Brings the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance number two to a total of That completes the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
Motion been made and second to approve as read on the question. Anybody seen none? Roll call.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Unfinished business.
It was a big number.
Parking amendment, commercial vehicles. Board to consider ordinance amend the village code regarding regulation of commercial vehicle parking on residential properties. Director Sylvester.
So Mr. Mayor and trustees, the community, community development department has been working on these revisions for a couple of months. They were presented last month and there was some confusion about whether they were actually the recommendations that everyone wanted. That was clarified and what's in front of you tonight are the recommended changes to clarify rules for what commercial vehicles can and can't be parked in residential areas.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made and second. On the question. Trustee Barry, it covers everything.
And it really did last time. It was really kind of a timing thing that, you know, we got the ordinance when we were in meeting and, and it was just, once we, I read through it, it was all in there. It just, the way it was worded to us was deep plate only, but really the height restriction, the nine-foot height restriction, I think is, is covering what we set out to do.
Good. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Moving on to new business, A, Hotel Motel Grant Request from the Westmont Lions for their Oktoberfest. Board to consider a motion awarding a hotel motel grant request in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Lions for an Oktoberfest event. Director Parker.
So as the board is aware, and it was as discussed in the committee meeting, the Administration Finance Committee, the village has a program where we are able to award grant money to community events to be able to help them with that event. This is the first year the Lions Club is requesting this specifically for the Oktoberfest. It was discussed at the committee and the committee recommended approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry. Second, Addington.
I thought you wanted to stay away from it.
Motion been made and second. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, 255 North Wulmette, a porch variance. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning code variance to permit the construction of a front porch which encroaches into the required front yard setback. Director Sylvester.
So this is a request to extend the roof of a house out towards the street to cover an existing stoop. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at a public hearing and recommended approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second. On the question. Anybody in the audience? Anybody, no trustees, then I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, 102 South Lincoln, a fence variance. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance to allow a fence which exceeds the height limitation for fences located in the side yard adjoining a street. Director Sylvester.
So I assume everyone's seen the new house. It's been under construction over the winter, just a block south of Village Hall. The builder has requested a fence variance to try to enclose some of the backyard to create some privacy for the owners of that home because it's a corner lot and there's an alley that's difficult. So the builder requested a variance to allow a fence a little taller than would normally otherwise be allowed. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval after they required the developer, the builder, to make some changes to the fence, particularly at the corner along the alley so that any vehicles leaving the alley would be able to see the sidewalk or anyone on the sidewalk before they're at that corner.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question.
The only thing I would like to comment on is I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Board again. I was able to watch the meeting and they ask all the right questions and I just, they just go, go above and beyond. So I do want to extend thanks for them for all their hard work.
And I, my concern is just like they covered here, is, is that last 10, 10-foot there for, so we don't create a safety issue.
Again, Trustee Guzzo said our planning and zoning does such a thorough job. By the time it gets us all, everything's been worked out. So, roll call.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, 933 Oakwood Drive, a shed and patio variance. Board to consider ordinance approving the following requests for zoning code variance. One, a variance to allow an accessory structure, a shed, in the rear yard with a reduced separation distance from the principal structure. And two, a variance to allow a patio that encroaches into the required side yard setback. Director Sylvester.
So this house is right across the street from Westmont High. It's at the corner of Oakwood and Williamsburg where those two streets diverge. It's a difficult lot. It's got streets on both sides of it, basically. And the owners want to put a shed in their backyard, but their backyard is very shallow based on the way the lot was created. So the first variance would let them put a shed closer to the house than the ordinances require. The ordinances require 10 feet of separation, but they just can't do that given the, the shallowness of their rear yard. And then secondly, they want to create a patio on the Williamsburg side and they don't have enough room to meet the setback requirement. But Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it. They don't think that it'll create any problems. And again, at the public hearing, they recommended approval.
Any public comment at the public hearing?
On that one, I don't think there was any public comment at all, no.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second. Additional comments or questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, 301 to 311 East Ogden, Amendment to Special Use. Board to consider an ordinance approving an amendment to an existing special use permit to allow the display of used automobiles, other than Porsche, Porsches, along Ogden Avenue. Director Sylvester.
So two years ago, the village approved a special use permit to allow auto sales by Napleton on East Ogden. One of the requirements when that special use was approved was that only Porsche vehicles could be displayed along the sidewalk closest to Ogden. Napleton is changing their business. They're offering other vehicles for sale and to their credit, rather than just ignore that requirement and maybe wait to get caught, they came forward and said, hey, we'd like that requirement and maybe wait to get caught, came forward and said, hey, we'd like to continue selling cars here, but we don't think we can continue to comply with that one specific requirement about only displaying Porsches, so could we have our permit amended? They went through the process. Planning and Zoning Commission considered that at a public hearing, and they recommended approval.
We do have a representative. If anybody has any specific questions. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second. Comments? Question? Again, planning and zoning did a good job.
They did.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F. Increase in available massage establishment license. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available massage establishment license by one for My Foot Spa LTD, formerly Detox Foot Spa, LTD six-six-seven North Cass Avenue. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Detox Foot Spa has been at this location for five years. They now wish to offer full massage services. The background review indicates the applicant is eligible to receive this license. Mr. Wang is here with me today in his corner. He's part owner of two local restaurants, one in Downers and another here in Westmont. He wishes to continue to remain part of our community. Mr. Wang is, will be providing the massages for the time being. He has been licensed as a massage therapist for five years. He's been at this location for the foot massages for four to almost five years.
Almost five years.
Okay. And now, he wishes to branch out to do the full massages. My question was, he's been certified for five years, why not? He wanted to make sure he had the foot massage going first before he moved further, and I was willing to do that. So, I will introduce Mr. Wang to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Yu Su Wang, and I'm the owner of the Detox Massage, and we've been serving the Westmont for like almost five years. And for the past five years, we've got pretty good feedback from all the customer and doing everything in the right way. So, now I want to, you know, extend our business a little bit, and I want to get approved before, you know, here, and hopefully I can get it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question.
Mr. Wang, what business do you have in Westmont? What is the restaurant?
Oh, we do have Sushi House. Sushi House by Pasman Nadi. That one has been in there for twenty-five years, and also Katie's Dumpling. It's just next door to my foot massage place. It's all the family business, all the family members.
That's how you know Tom, from Katie's Dumpling? He likes it.
My new favorite.
Very good, thank you.
And Tom, you've checked everything, there's no issues, no problem?
None, Mayor, none at all. As you know, with massage establishments, as I was explaining, it's a very touchy situation in this case. We did everything, yeah, sorry, no point intended. But however, he does understand that he does have certain physical requirements, bathrooming, other requirements that have been done. That will be inspected by code enforcement. He will not get his massage establishment license until all those requirements have been inspected and he's in compliance.
Any other questions from the audience? Board, seen none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. You're welcome. New business G. Increase in available Class Four liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class Four liquor license by one for Oberweis Dairy, DBA Woodgreen, Neapolitan Pizzeria, nineteen West Ogden Avenue. And we got Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Oberweis Dairy owns and operates Woodgreen Pizza at nineteen West Ogden. They are requesting a Class Four liquor license to serve beer and wine. Woodgreen previously had a Class Four liquor license with their old ownership at this location. My background revealed that Oberweis Dairy is eligible to receive this license should the mayor decide to issue one. There are no anticipated changes in their plan to accommodate this request. This is the first liquor license for Oberweis and their managing of Woodgreen Pizzas. As you know, the management ownership changed in January of this year. First time I can say this in a long time. With me is Tom Fanna, with a great first name, so can I say that? He is from Oberweis Dairy to answer any questions the board may have.
Yep. When did you take ownership?
I'm good. We took over January first.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question. You got one, trustee Barry?
Sure, I always have questions. With this liquor license, do you see in the future, or do you have intentions in the future of requesting the gambling machines?
No.
No, and something one of my colleagues brought up is that...
Not at all, yeah. I know somebody did previously.
We need to hold people accountable when they tell us that at the beginning, you know, and that's one of the things, I think, moving forward.
Not at all.
And as if you recall, the previous owner did submit an application back in July of last year. He then withdrew his application. As you know, Oberweis Dairy, those things in groups of three with that, what's the hamburger?
That burger joint.
That burger joint, Woodgreen Pizzas, and Oberweis Dairies. That former owner pulled his application because in his conversations with people at Oberweis Dairy, they did not want to go that route. They did not want video gaming. It's not something that they wanted for their family business. And as I said in here, too, Oberweis Dairy, this is their first foray or first experience in having liquor, because even then, that was a questionable thing.
And that brings to my second point, is that we've seen kind of an issue that we have with minors being served today, and it's not really the owners or anything, but it seems like it's this work ethic that, you know, they're serving to very obvious underage IDs. What things are going to be done to get you guys trained and up to speed on that?
Well, everybody that serves liquor in this restaurant will be over twenty-one, and everybody will be best at certified, that serves. Every single employee that serves will be. So, they'll go through a program.
As well as their general manager, who was part of the background review, was the general manager that was existing under the previous liquor license, so she has experience at this location. And I believe, if I remember certainly right, there were no violations for underage serving under her leadership.
Wonderful.
That's right.
There's actually three people there that were there previously when they had a liquor license.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience? Seen none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. New business H. A new liquor license classification for craft beer tasting room. Board to consider ordinance amending chapter ten of the code of ordinances to create a new liquor license classification to allow for a tasting room of craft beer, brew beers only inside a Class Five liquor license business. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Thank you, Mayor. A new liquor license class is needed to allow for on- premise consumption of beer only, specifically specialty craft brews, in an establishment Class Five liquor store, liquor license store. Retail sale for off-site consumption is allowed, however, tasting times and sizes are limited. A current Class Five licensee is interested in opening a specialty craft brew tasting room. Only specialty craft brews can be served for on and off- premise consumption. Number of craft brews available for tasting will be limited, as will serving sizes. I do have a representative, Prestige Liquors. They are the only Class Five liquor store in Westmont. They have been made clear that this license class is not being made specifically for them, yet they are the person, they are the people who have approached the village with this, and they are the only liquor store that we have in town. This will not apply to stores such as Mariano's or Standard Markets, because with their liquor licenses, they already have the ability for on-premise. The main part with this, this is for specialty craft brew tasting only. My representative here has been a huge educational resource for me. Craft brews are becoming more and more popular. It's a niche that even over the last seven years, things have changed dramatically in this venue. Prestige would like to open a small onsite brew tasting only area. There would be no seats. It would be just onsite consumption. They could do off-premise or packaged goods sales, but they will charge for their tastings, and it's only for specialty brews only. No Miller Lights, no anything like that, just, and then if you want, Dylan can explain more if you want, but then again, that's not so much for the license class, if you have any questions.
Did we put a limit on ounces?
Yes, Mayor, we used the description that we used for the brewing class, as similarly, basically for Whiskey Hill, and a patron is only limited to tasting sizes by the glass capacity no more than sixteen ounces, by the bottle having a capacity no more than twenty-four ounces, and by the flight not having more than four ounces with each glass containing capacity of not more than four ounces. And so, that's the guideline that we used, and Prestige is comfortable with that.
Want to add to that group?
Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to this edition. That's really important, not only to our store, but it's really important to the village of Westmont. You guys are probably getting approached with new breweries, wanting to expand. Chicago has just passed up the West Coast and the East Coast as a number-one craft beer destination. What's happening is, it's not really me wanting this, our customers have moved us this way. They come to me, they're like, Dylan, you know, I wish you guys had handles, because that new release of that new craft beer from Hot Butcher is getting released in Glen Allen at the Beer Cellar. I wish you guys had it here. So, not only do we want to have that so that our, the people that live in Westmont don't leave, they stay here to purchase and to spend their money here, we also want to prevent them from leaving. And there's nothing more powerful than the craft beer industry. I could put something on beer menus right now, and somebody would drive from five pounds over. So, we are, I don't want to get too...
Not me, just butt. By the podium.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. The millennials are really moving this movement. There was an article in the New York Times last week, and it said that the fastest-growing job sector is breweries, sales reps for local breweries, and delivery drivers. It's a movement, and it's powerful, and we are not getting certain beers because we don't have tap handles. All the local breweries want to release their beers somewhere where it's on tap, where people can sample it, purchase it, and then buy packaging. We're not getting any of these new releases because of not having tap handles. So, it's just really important, and you know what? You look at the Winterfest, how we had five hundred people show up. Naperville's been doing it for ten years. They only had fifteen hundred people show up. So, it's just showing us that this area is hungry for this, and we want to be a part of that.
And what's the address of your store?
Sixty-two forty-nine South Cass.
Put a plug in.
If you're familiar with Prestige, when we were doing inspections, we've had people from outside the village impressed by the selection that they have, both in beer and wines. If you've been in there, there's a small room on, I would put it the upper right-hand corner of their premise. Right now, it's where they have craft brews now. They will clean this out. They're going to be putting sprinkling systems in. They have agreed to sprinkle the first floor. Basement's already sprinkled. They have agreed to bathroom changes. They're willing to put monetary effort into this to make this a reality.
I'll ask trustee Barry's question. Video gaming.
This class, it's called the Class Twenty-four. Video gaming licenses does not allow issuance of a Class Twenty-three and a Class Twenty-four.
Just needed you to say it.
Yeah. We talked to him about it.
What's the square footage of your store? Approximately?
It's over five thousand. Good question. I have that on me. I do have that at the store. They just did the blueprints for us. I think it's five thousand square feet.
Little bit more.
You could cover the whole five thousand square feet with this product.
Oh, yeah.
If he had his way, he would.
Yeah. I mean, that's where, that's where, that's where we are, the time that we're in. You know, craft beer is on fire, and Illinois is number one, so, and it's kind of the American dream, where a guy can open up a garage, brew his own beer, and sell it, you know, and it's, the millennials are behind this. I took my wife and my daughter downtown last year. I was on vacation, and I said, you know, let's drive through the city. Let's, you know, let's check everything out. It's been a while since we've been in the city, and all you saw was these breweries and people hanging out outside. It's a movement, and it's something that, for Westmont, it's good for the village, because we want to bring people in, spend their money, and we don't want them leaving. So, it's really all a part of, part of that.
And I spoke to Finance Director Parker. This is a subject not to their packaged goods sales, and I told Dylan today, they're going to have to keep track of their onsite sales, because it will be subject to places for these tests.
Do I have, do I have a motion first?
I have a question.
Oh, I was going to take a motion and ask a question. Before I forget.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So, she can ask the question.
All right. On the question.
What size is the room that you're going to be putting your...
It's going to be twenty...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Square feet? Okay. Thank you.
But it's going to be attached to the craft beer room, which is, we're going to kind of stand the wall, yeah, that's all.
I know where it's at.
How do you know?
I buy all my wine there.
They've been such a longstanding, great business, and one thing, one thing that I always notice from a good business is how long they retain employees. And I think you've had the same guys in there since I was twenty-one, started going in there.
Started a long ago.
And that always says a lot about how things are going there, and I think when we do these types of things, this is exactly who we want to help out.
Yes.
You know, and I know you guys are great neighbors to the King Car Wash, and that's all part of being a great community, so this is a good thing.
Trustee Addington.
I just want a statement to kind of, what he's talking about. One of our zone chairman, who's from the Elmhurst Club, his wife does these tastings. She's busy twice every weekend. They're, they're in, they're just everywhere, and it's big. You know, by the end of, by the end of an afternoon, she's talked to a couple hundred people. So, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying is, if you wanted to, I think you could fill the whole store with nothing but these craft beers.
I would do it if I could. And it sells. No, no, some of us like wine.
Well, you have to have a couple, you have to have a couple of the other stuff, but it's amazing. I know what you're saying, yeah.
We're actually pulling a lot of people from Hinsdale for our wine selection, where we've been working really hard on that. My background is actually twenty years in wine. That's what they brought me in for, but then when I started, all these customers were coming, and do you have this craft beer? Do you have that craft beer? Do you have this craft beer? I'm like, what is this craft beer thing? And so, we started, you know, talking to ourselves, reps, bringing in more beers, and it just continues to grow and grow, but the thing that...
You got to move over to the mic.
Sorry. There's certain things that we cannot get, because like I said, all the local breweries want to release their stuff where there's tap handles, so people are leaving, and we're unable to sell to them, and they're going to Glen Allen. Now, Orange and Brew opened up in Downers Grove, and he's getting the releases first because he has tap handles. So, we just want to be able to compete, to bring people into Westmont like we've been doing, and just not have them leave Westmont.
And if you have a special event, you'll contact Tom?
Yes, we'll contact Tom, we'll let everybody know, and we'll also break it down, the releases, so it's not too crowded, so we're not parking on the street. If there is a big event, I'll talk to the neighbors, we'll talk to Tom. But we're going to stagger the releases, so it's not all happening at one time. So there's not a huge line, and the parking lot's full, and the streets are-
Any additional comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Motion passes, how soon?
Well, this was just, the board just approved creating the class. They now have to apply to get this license. So you'll see Dylan again probably in one of the two meetings in June, and then how soon after you get that?
We're hoping the last week of July will be up and going.
Good, thank you.
We're aiming for, yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New Business I. Zoning tax amendment, escrow funds and zoning verification fees. Board to consider an ordinance amending the zoning code to allow the village to collect escrow funds for zoning applications when necessary, and to charge fees for official zoning verification letters. Director Sylvester.
So many cases that go through planning and zoning do not need any engineering review, like the cases on the agenda earlier tonight for a small patio or for a fence variation. But larger projects, like the medical office building that was recently reviewed up on Ogden, do require review by an outside engineer at a preliminary level. Later in the stage, if the zoning is approved and it goes on to permitting, much more detailed engineering plans are created, and those more detailed plans are reviewed at that stage. Currently, we don't have a system, though, for paying for those reviews, for those preliminary plans for the zoning cases. And this simply creates a mechanism where we can collect money from the developer, again, these are for larger projects upfront, and then pay those outside reviews from the money that we collect upfront. Part of the reason we're recommending this is sometimes developers will present an application, we'll spend a lot of time reviewing it, a lot of money reviewing it. If it's not approved, or if the developer just decides to walk away from their project, then we're left without a way to collect from them to pay for those bills.
Are they paying a certain percent, or just what you project?
What we do is, we'll estimate based on experience about what we anticipate the costs to be. Anything that we don't actually use to pay for reviews is refunded back to the applicant at the end of the process.
When you say larger, is there a dollar amount, or?
Honestly, it's more of an art than a science. Staff knows from experience, you know, if it's a new construction or a redevelopment, there'll definitely be engineering. If it's a fence proposal, probably not. And the gray area are the projects in between where we make a judgment call about if we think engineering's going to be needed or not.
Better motion.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second to approve, on to question. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business J. Parking tax amendment. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following tax amendments to the Westmont Code of Ordinances. One, amendment to Section 78-322, parking for a downtown B1 business district employee parking permit holder. And two, amendment to Section 78-349, time limits and monthly leases. Director Parker.
So basically, there are three things that this change is doing. Number one is discussed at prior committee and budget discussions, it's increasing the quarterly parking fee from $100 to $125. Number two, it's providing another fee option for people who drive motorcycles or mopeds, that they'll be able to park for a lower cost, which would be $75 per year, which is the same cost as our downtown business parking permits are. And then third, it's cleaning up a little bit of language about the downtown business parking permits in terms of where spaces are allowed and where they're not.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Barry.
Motion made and second to approve, on to question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
New Business K. Water rate adjustment. Board to consider ordinance amending water rates. Director Parker.
This is an item that the board is familiar with, it was also discussed both at committee and at the budget workshop. And as has been discussed previously over the last couple of years, the board has identified several infrastructure needs in the water system, and to facilitate those, we needed to increase water rates. That's something that the board hadn't done for a long time at that point, and so there was a significant increase needed. The board decided at that time, rather than increasing rates all at once, they would do it gradually over a period of years. So the estimate is to be increasing our infrastructure portion of our water rates, 40 cents each year for the next couple of years. I think we're on now the second or third year of our five year trajectory. That may go longer as needed in terms of the bond issue for the public works facility. If that's needed to push it longer, we have that ability. Or if we find other ways to fund it, we may not. But in either case, it's needed this year to be able to fund infrastructure projects. In addition to that, our cost for the water has also gone up, and so there's a slight increase due to that as well. 3 cents for that, 40 cents for the village infrastructure.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Guzzo?
Motion made and second, on to question. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
New Business L. Public Works Facility Bond Series 2019A. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, income tax alternate revenue source, Series 2019A of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County, Illinois, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 10 million in one or more series for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, installation, and rehabilitation of various capital related projects, including but not limited to, certain improvements to the public works facility within the village, and paying certain costs of issuance of the bonds, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and interest of said bonds. Director Parker.
So I'll cover one general explanation for the next three items. So item L and M are the issuance of the bond, so it's the parameters ordinance saying, here's the types of bond sales that will be accepted, and those are what are needed to do the public works facility. L is the one that covers the part that's not funded by the water fund, so that's primarily funded by the reduction in costs and the trimming back of capital expenditures. It's also funded by the places freeding tax. Letter M is the one that's primarily funded by the water revenues. And then letter N is a bond disclosure compliance policy. So as part of the bond process, the village is required to disclose things and make continuing disclosures. So if things that would impact our bonds and our ability to pay back the bonds happen, there's a specific list of them, then the village needs to disclose those, make those known. We need to, you know, be honest, make sure we're covering everything we should in our bond disclosures, and that's what the policy basically covers.
I'm looking for a motion for the Bond Series 2019A.
So move, Guzzo? Second, Little?
Motion made and second, on to question. Mike, you, nothing? Yeah, I know, I know. All right, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. M. Public Works Facility Bond Series 2019B. Board to consider ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, waterworks alternate revenue source, Series 2019B of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 7,500,000 in one or more series for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, installation, and rehabilitation of various capital related projects, including but not limited to, certain water system related improvements to the public works facility within the village, and paying certain costs of issuance of the bonds, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and interest of said bonds. And Director Parker, I think you covered it, but the floor is yours again. Seeing none, I have a, I mean, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little?
Motion made and second, any additional comments? Questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business N. Bond Disclosure Compliance Policy. Board to consider resolution adopting a disclosure compliance policy of the Village of Westmont, DuPage County, Illinois. And again, I'll turn to Director Parker if you have any additional comments. Seeing none, I'd look for a motion, please.
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Barry.
Motion made and second to approve. Comments, questions, seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
New Business O.
I'm voting on this one.
Clerical Amendment to Mayor and Clerk Compensation Ordinance. Who snuck this in? Board to consider an ordinance correcting a clerical error in the compensation ordinance for the mayor and village clerk. Director Parker.
So, as we were looking at the ordinance for adjusting the compensation for the trustees who were just elected, in the course of that, we noticed there was a statement in the initial ordinance that was not in compliance with our current practice, and was not in the practice before the ordinance was adopted as well. And so we're simply correcting that ordinance to match our current practice. The ordinance indicated that the mayor and clerk should potentially be paid for attending special meetings-
To be eliminated.
Which has not been done since I've been here.
Which we didn't expect anyway. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little?
Motion made and second, on to question. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Moving on miscellaneous. Anybody? I, Larry Corisberg, about the canceled event, do you want to at least comment? We ran into bad weather.
Mayor, that's an excellent idea, yes, the annual pet promenade in Party in the Park was postponed this past Sunday. We partnered with EMA, and the weather report we received at 6:00 AM was very threatening. So we made the most appropriate call, and we postponed it. We are working right now with the Westmont Park District, and we are planning and rescheduling it sometime in September. We hope to have an announcement sometime within the next seven to 10 business days. But we appreciate the support of EMA. We talked Saturday morning, we talked Saturday night, we talked at 6:00 AM on Sunday morning to make sure that, you know, we were going down the right path with something like this, because obviously, we had literally hundreds of people involved with vendors, and folks coming out for Touch a Truck and so forth, so we appreciate their help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know, Larry has really taken me under his wing with economic development. That's why we're starting to dress alike, I don't know if you guys have noticed that, but- So this will be a continued theme moving forward, that we will- Yeah, so you'll notice this more and more as we move forward, so.
Looks good. Any other miscellaneous? Then I need an executive session, that will be short, but the executive session, I request a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss threatened litigation by Vanco Incorporated regarding a contract dispute. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second to adjourn to executive session. Roll call.
Trustee Addington? Trustee Barry?
If you don't want me to respond, I mean-
Yes.
You usually answer faster than that. You were taking a nap. Trustee Barry?
I do that, too. Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
All right, we'll be adjourning to executive session. When we come out of executive session, there'll be no further business, and I'll adjourn the meeting. I'd like to thank everyone for attending.